One more. Good evening, I would like to call the October 5th, 2016 Amory City Council Meeting to order. Fran, roll call?
Yes, Dan Lurco.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Baker?
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raymond Schneider.
Here.
And Strohwa.
Yes.
Thank you. And the man behind the camera is going to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before the council sits down, stand up. Okay. Mary, you want to pan the council with our shirts from the Amory Police Department?
Hold it up.
Tim, get closer to Julie here.
Please hold it up, Tim.
Thank you. In your packets, you have the minutes from the September 7th council meeting. If you would take a look at those, please.
Motion to approve the September 7th minutes.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Minutes are carried. Upcoming events. Judy from Amory Community Center.
Good evening, everyone. We would like everyone to join us at the Amory Community Center for an Oktoberfest fundraising beanbag tournament. We will play Rain or Shine on Saturday, October 15th, starting at 11:00 a.m. You will have a chance to win $500 for first place based on a minimum of 20 teams. We need teams, so please sign up. It will cost $30 per team if you pre-register and $40 if you register the day of the tournament. You can contact Kerry at the center at 715-268-6605 to register for this upcoming fun event. There will also be a 17 and under bags tournament for the kids. It's only $10 to enter and first place is a brand-new set of regulation boards. There will be pint-sized polka for the little ones, dancing, or polka dancing, for the kids from 12:30 to 1:00 p.m. And I thought this sounded like it would be very cute and fun to watch. Music will be provided by Carjackers Entertainment, Jim Armstrong, and Cattail Moon. There will be 50/50 raffles every hour and free face painting for the kids from 12 noon until 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon. There will be pork chops, brats, and hot dogs for sale by the Lions Club. They will be cooking. Oktoberfest beer and other beverages will be available for purchase. So we ask that no carry-ins, please. And there will be a skill shot challenge every hour as well. We hope to see everyone at the center for our Oktoberfest fundraiser. It will be a lot of fun for all who attend. Thank you for your time and have an awesome evening.
Thank you.
Skinny.
Yep.
How did your pancake breakfast go on Sunday?
Awesome. Awesome. Outstanding. Yeah. Very successful.
Be a regular.
I think so.
Rather than attempt.
Yeah, it was very, very successful. And people seemed to really like it. They stayed warm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And no bees.
No bees, yeah.
And no bees.
Yeah, no bees.
We have two political candidates, I believe, in the audience who would like to introduce themselves to us. So... Up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jeff Kemp. I'm running for Polk County District Attorney. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm 53 years old. I'm from Walworth County, which is about five hours from here. Law is not my first profession. It's a second career for me. I grew up on a farm in Elkhorn, Wisconsin. Worked as mechanic for 15 years in a family shop. When my father retired, he decided to go back to school, ended up in law school. Went to school at Hamlin, graduated. And I've loved this area so much, as we used to come up here fishing and stuff when we were younger. And just, we always thought, gosh, if we could make a living here, it would be a great place to live. And so, now I've got a chance, so. I've been practicing criminal defense for the past seven years. I live in St. Croix Falls with my wife Kate, who's here as well. I just, I've got some information. I've got some brochures I'd like to leave with you. I have a website and Facebook page as well. There's been a Q&amp;A that's been done in the local papers. You can find out a little bit more about me. We also have a debate coming up at Trollhagen on August 22nd from...
August, October.
Yeah, I'm sorry. October 22nd. At Trollhagen from 11 to 1:00. So I invite everybody here to come and see that. If you have any questions for me, I answer them. If you think of something later, if you want to contact me through my Facebook page or website, I'm real good about getting back to you within the hour. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just leave these here.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Dan Stefan. I am the District Attorney in Polk County, running for reelection. I've been the District Attorney for 10 years. It's been my honor to serve the people of Polk County for the last 10 years. Been an attorney for 18 years. When I decided to run for Polk County District Attorney, at that time, I was an experienced prosecutor. I had prosecuted for the villages of Somerset, Amory, Hammond, Baldwin, and Woodville. I was an experienced trial lawyer at that time. I had done dozens of trials at that time, handling all types of cases, multi-day, felony levels, cases at that time. I was very experienced and ready for the position. Over the last 10 years, I want to take you back just a little bit. 10 years ago, my office, before I took, before I was elected, my office didn't speak to the Sheriff's Department. Didn't speak to the Sheriff's Department. Didn't speak to the Department of Human Services. Didn't speak to Juvenile Justice. One of the judges was on a non-speaking relationship with my office. Had to do anything in writing. Over the 10 years that I've been District Attorney, we have fixed those relationships. Our office, our county, is in a position now that it is being well-run. The right people are in the right positions to do the job very efficiently. In terms of what we've done for the county, we are one of the first counties in this state to go paperless. We are saving the county thousands of dollars a year by scanning and using our computers rather than paper. I encourage you to look at my brochures. I'm not going to list probably a dozen types of committees and programs that, with my office, we've created in this county for the protection of victims, children, drug-endangered children, victims of domestic violence. But some of the programs that I've listed in that brochure are groundbreaking in this state. And I'm very proud of them. Now, there has been a Q&amp;A in the local papers, but I think I need to address a couple of things. Because I tried to bite my tongue throughout this campaign and I was hoped that we were going to deal with the issues and the qualifications of both of us. But whenever Mr. Kemp gets a chance, and his people, he talks about my OWI from last year. And I have readily admitted that I made one of the worst decisions of my life. I've asked for forgiveness. I've done everything I was supposed to do. Mr. Kemp repeatedly talks about honesty and integrity of my office and my employees and our morality. But what he doesn't tell anybody is about his own criminal conviction from two years ago, where in a drunken bar fight, he broke a man's nose, which in every case that comes in front of my office in a bar fight is a felony. Now, he got a sweetheart deal and got a disorderly conduct conviction out of it, but he doesn't seem to report that to anybody, but wants to talk about morality and honesty. There are other issues that are, that deal specifically with those types of allegations that he's lobbing at me, but I'm not going to deal with them. Now, we'll deal with them at that debate, perhaps on the 22nd. Most importantly, once we get past all of that rhetoric, I want you to look at his qualifications, which are very important and pulled right off of his website. His qualifications are, he worked on his family farm. He graduated high school, college, law school. He's a member of a fraternity. He clerked for a judge before becoming admitted to the bar. He worked for approximately, I want to say, a year and a half at a firm, and then was let go. All of the times, he's worked out of his own home, self-employed.
Thank you, Mr. Stefan. We really need to move on.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, folks. Thank you.
Compare our qualifications.
Thank you. Officers' reports. Chance Green, we'll start with you on public works.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Been a busy month. We've been... Well, we're flushing, so if you have any discolored water or anything like that, please just let the faucet run. It'll usually clear up. Also, next week, we'll be turning water valves, so there will also be another discoloration. Again, just flush the water. Should clear up. City dump will be open all month and weather permitting into next month, as well as the campgrounds. As long as the weather permitting, we're going to keep it open. Been pretty good so far. What else you think? That's about it?
So it's open every Saturday?
I thought, no, it is open the first and third Saturdays of the month.
But daily it's open, too?
Correct. If you call and request it, we can make sure it's open. If you have to get rid of leaves, brush, things like that, that's, we can make that happen.
Are you going to leave the campground open even after you flush the water lines out of it?
We will not. No, once we flush the water, we will close it. We're probably planning for early November, closing it. But last year, we had nice weather, well into November. So if, hopefully, it's the same this year and we can, we can continue into November.
Can you give us any kind of statistics on how much the campground is used and payments and that sort of thing, or not?
That I don't know. Dwayne collects the money in the morning and brings it here to City Hall. It was a soft opening. That's been said before. I do, I was happy with the turnout around Fall Fest. We, I think we had five campers in there. So that was our fullest weekend. We had no issues with electricity, all the plumbing, everything worked good, so that was nice. Hopefully, we can continue with that. But adds, right now, I have no numbers yet.
I think when we just, we were, we're working on the budget, the number that, so far, we had budgeted $5,000 that we thought the revenue might be, and we're at about half of that, I think. Close to half. And as Chance said, it was a slow start.
Okay. Questions for Chance? Thank you. Police Chief, Tom Marson.
I apologize for being late, but I do appreciate the shirts that most of you are wearing. I wonder if that's what I'm going to talk about today. I didn't see Chief Strohwa, or Tim Strohwa.
How's it going to be kind, too?
You were going to be kind, too. Hi, I'm provided to the council and the media the October reports for the month of September. Certainly, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. October is bully prevention month, and we at the Amory Police Department think what better message to counter bullying than to be kind to one another. This month, you'll see our posters and kindness cards like these at the school and around there. And on the back, just put your name, phone number, and what kind of act of kindness you may have done. The cards are at many locations, and you can certainly ask one of our officers. If they're not busy, I would appreciate that. Not in the middle of anything. Or swing into the police department and fill out your kindness card and drop it off. Our lobby is always open. We will be later in the month having a drawing for 100 t-shirts like those right, that our council members are wearing there, along with other prizes there. And certainly, if anybody feels the need to have that type of attire there, they can certainly stop at our police department and, for a mere $5, can have one of those fine collector item shirts. In all signs there. And we'd certainly like to add our, a name to our city, the Kindness City, as well there. So, I appreciate you putting them on. On this Friday, we have teamed up with Amory Chevrolet for Coffee with a Cup time from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And I want to thank Jessica from the Free Press for putting a little blurb in there. Stop in, have a cup of coffee, talk to a member of our department on whatever you'd like to talk about. We want to get to know you better, and we want you to know us better. The Amory Police Department is partnering with the Amory Women's Club and the Wisconsin Department of Justice to have a Drug Takeback Day again on Saturday, October 22nd, from the hours of 9:00 and 1:00 p.m. Contact our department if additional information is needed, and it's always a great and safe way to dispose of unwanted medications. Lastly, a big thanks to all our city staff and all involved with the Amory Fall Festival. On the police side, there was a large turnout for most of the evenings there, but everybody had a great time, and the number of complaints that we had was very low. So, thank you to all. Any questions at all?
Tom, would you talk about the police dog that's going to have to test this week?
Our canine, after a little, few little ripples there, is actually going to be tested on Friday for certification there, and all indications are that it's going to be favorable there. So we will know on Friday there if there's any other thing that needs to be done. So, we're excited about that venture to bring in our community there, so.
What time, Tom, what time is coffee on Friday, did you say?
And obviously, not trying to take away from Coffee with the Mayor.
It's all right. We're next to town.
But 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
9:00 to 11:00 on Friday.
Correct.
At the Chevy Garage.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Fire Department, Dale Kaler.
Good evening. Kind of a short report this month. I also filled out a run report and submitted it. And I would be glad to answer any questions you have about the run report. A couple notes this month. We have fire prevention coming up, and we thought we would combine fire prevention with our 125th anniversary this year. So it's a combined event. It's on October 15th, 1 to 4, at the Fire Hall. We have events such as a live burn, so we do our flashover room. We actually build a model of the room and we show common furniture in your home on fire. We'll have a fire extinguisher demonstration, and depending on how many people want it, we may allow live burns at the fire extinguisher demonstration. We have things like Sparky the Dog. We have lots of things to give away to young people. Free hot dogs, food, cake for the anniversary. North Helicopter, which is one of our EMS helicopters, will be flying in for that day. And then we'll also have the Smokehouse. The Smokehouse will be there 1 to 4. And I'd like to remind everybody that the Smokehouse, you see it, you used to see it more. We don't see it as much anymore. But that was a cooperative effort between the fire departments on the southern half of our county. So, we're part, we're part owner in that, and we get to use it once in a while. So we're going to bring it back this year. It's been a year or so since we did that. Also, at the Open House, Amory True Value is going to be there testing the fire smoke detectors for us. And you can get free batteries for your smoke detector at that time. There will be smoke detectors on sale also from the True Value in town. But I'd like to also mention that we received the grant, and we received the grant of some 250 smoke detectors. It's kind of an interesting grant, because the smoke detectors, when we give them away, have to be installed by a firefighter. So, at our Open House, you'll have a chance, if you, if you don't have smoke detectors that are working in your home or they're 10 years or older, you'd like to sign up for one of our smoke detectors and have a firefighter come in. I guess I would encourage those that have small children, we could kind of use it as a fire safety event. When the fire department comes in to hang that smoke detector, our guys would certainly review any of the evacuation drills and stuff you might have at your home, too. So, we could kind of combine those two things. Calendars are out. Our calendars came out on time. It was a great, great timing for the Fall Fest. We started giving them out Fall Festival, and we still have some left. You can receive a calendar by stopping in any of the sponsors on our calendar, which are most of the major sponsors in town here. So, I get calls on the answering machine quite a bit, where can I get my calendar? We have distributed them out to all of the businesses in town. So, feel free to stop by and grab one. I think, oh, one other thing, I see on my other note. We also received a DNR grant. I wrote for a DNR grant, and we received a grant for $15,193 to be put towards wildland fire gear. We can use it for some replacements, some of our boots and things. So we're kind of excited about that. It's been a few years since we got that grant as well. Are there any questions?
Not a question, but just a comment that the September 11th program at the Fire Hall was very, I'd just say, commendable.
Thank you. Thank you. It worked out very well. And just so everybody knows, every time it falls on a weekend, we do it at the Fire Hall with the fire departments involved mainly and stuff. And then, every year that it falls during a school day, the school does do a program at school. It's held out in front of the Intermediate School and the bands there and things like that. But the general public is welcome to those, too. And, and I know the general public showed up to ours a little bit more than they do at the school, but every, every year at 9:11, we'd like to remember that occasion with, with the program, either at the Firehouse or at school, so.
Did you order the boat?
We did. Yep. Last month, we got the approval from the city council to do that. Actually, that night, I ordered it. I got on the phone and called the VP and the President of the company. I said, you got to move a little bit on the price. And I did manage a $4,000 reduction since the last cost I shared with, with the committee last month. And then, I gave him a verbal okay over the phone, and he got us in line. I remember me telling him, there's a big order coming. So we're in ahead of that order, so. That'll work out well.
Good.
Any other questions that can help you out?
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
Dave Myers wants to talk about something.
Several years ago, the city applied for a Tree City, Wisconsin, award. And this summer, we were given that award. One of the requirements is that we annually celebrate Arbor Day, which usually is in the spring. We have changed it to the fall. It will be October 15th, Saturday, October 15th. The Amory Public Schools has done an excellent job of assisting us with this project. They are hosting the event at the High School Forest or High School Park, which is east of the campus and east of the lake that is behind the schools. So, 10 o'clock on Saturday, the 15th, the, I think, Intermediate School students are preparing a display. And the Don Kissinger, the head of forestry for the state of Wisconsin, will be there to help with the event. A tree will be planted, and it's kind of an exciting day for kids and for adults. And so, you're all invited, and put that on your calendar, and Saturday, October 15th. Arbor Day celebration at the Amory High School Campus Forest.
Intermediate.
Pardon?
Intermediate.
I believe the parking would be, the closest parking would be Intermediate Parking Lot or that south one of the middle school. The trail leaves the cut grass area right behind Intermediate School.
We hope to put a map on the website and in the Amory Free Press so that everybody will know where to go.
Thank you, David. James Nellen, the library director, could not be here tonight. He's in Eau Claire. But he put his report on the webs, on your tablets. You can read that. So we will go to Darcy Long City Administrator's Report.
Yeah, I'll mark some of the high points in here. We are in the middle of the 2017 budget process, or in the heat of that process. And I provided the city council previously an email, the schedule for that. There's going to be a little bit of change, but I'll send that out on one of the dates. Related to the housing study report that I have in, in the report there, we had a meeting on Monday, well, it was kind of a phone call thing, I think it was, a phone conference call, with WIDA, which was a continuation of the meeting that we had here in this room, talking about housing. And one of the things that we discussed in that meeting, which was very related to the housing study project, is that we talked about some of the programs that WIDA has available and how Amory can capitalize on some of those, or maybe even capitalize on some of the things we're doing here. So, they were helpful. In some cases, some of the programs, because of where we live, we just don't qualify for them. And it's because they're not available here, and we didn't meet certain requirements and whatnot. But that, that happens. But there may be some things that we can partner with them. When the study comes out, we can get some ideas from that. Work continues on, on the industrial park development there. I met yes, this week with head of the Planning Commission, and we talked about some steps as their involvement in that. Fran is completing the, getting the TIFF, TIFF 8 completion work done and getting that all wrapped up. That has to be done by beginning of, actually, it's Halloween. Yeah, Halloween has to be done. And the North, the North Twin Boat Landing Project, wow, this is, you know, we submitted a bunch of applications to the DNR for various things, for wetlands, for, to do the project. And that has not been as, I would say, as simple as we thought. So, they're looking at that parcel a little bit more, scrutinizing it a little bit. I met, I had a phone call with the engineer yesterday, and she mentioned that they want to look at it, come out and visit the site. When you look at that site, that is considered what they call a disturbed wetland area because of, because, well, the city didn't fill it in, the Department of Transportation did, when, the 50s or whatever, when they built the road. That was all the paperwork that's in the, in the application there for the wetland permit. But they still want to come out and visit. I think they've been out here previously when we were doing it. I think they met with Chance or Bones. And a lot of our, and as we've had in the discussion in the meeting, I think it was in August, we had a meeting in here with Parks and Rec. The development of that project is, has a, two different state agencies that are dealing with it. We have the DOT, we have the DNR, all causing different things to be changed in it and whatnot. So, hopefully, we can get that permit moved along, because that is one of the things that needs to be completed so that, and approved, so that we can submit the grant application. Which, if we get a grant, that project would move forward in 2017 sometime. All depends on how many applications they get for the Boat Landing Program there. So, hopefully, that would get done by the end of the year, and we have no issues there. One of the things that's on the agenda is this agreement with Polk County for assessments. I think the letter that Amanda Nissen provided us kind of explains it pretty well. I'm just bringing that up as a part of the report here. Next month, we'll hopefully have Deb Trandam, who is our, she does our personnel and HR for the city of Amory, so we can congratulate her for getting her SHRM certification. So, she's actually at a conference, so she's unable to, to be here to get recognized, so. Other than that, I don't know if I have anything else. As I said, we are working on the budget, and that is consuming a lot of time for all of us. And, well, besides Fran, Fran's going to mention here, I wanted her to talk about elections a little bit. Over the last six months, there's been different times when you had to bring your ID, and you didn't bring your ID, and now we're back to bring your ID.
To bring your photo ID.
You need to bring your photo ID. Why don't you get up there and explain a little bit, a little about that? Because I think, after last night's television event, I think people are really interested in what's going on in the election.
Every time there's a debate on TV, the next day I'm very busy. My phone rings, people come in, everybody wants to vote early. But there have been a lot of changes in election law recently. But where we're at right now, and where we will be at with the November election, is that people will be required to show a photo ID when they come in and vote. There's lots of information available on how to get a free photo ID if you do not have... There's lots of information available on how to get a free photo ID if you do not have currently a driver's license or a state-issued ID card. You can get one for free here at the DMV office in Amory that is open on Mondays and Wednesdays from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I also get a lot of questions about early voting. People can vote in person absentee in the city of Amory beginning October 24th. If you would like to vote absentee prior to then, that request does need to be made in writing, and I will mail you a ballot anytime. Those can go out as soon as they get the ballots. Actually, I sent out a batch of about 80 earlier this week. We also will have absentee voting in our nursing homes and CBRF facilities, of which Amory has four. We expect this year, based upon the people who are indicating interest early in those facilities, that we will have over 100 voters, just in those facilities alone, who vote absentee. So, we're just gearing up and getting ready for the big day, which is November 8th, of course, and the polling place is here at City Hall, where we are right now, in Council Chambers. Is there any questions? If you think of any later, just let me know.
Thanks, Fran.
And the last thing I'll mention is that there's, as the police decided that they wanted to have coffee and cookies, too, the mayor and I will have coffee and cookies again, so if you didn't get coffee and cookies at the police event, you can come and have them with the mayor and I here at City Hall. I think most of the last ones we've had have all been kind of all around different places in town, so now we're back here at City Hall. So, join us on October 13th, 10 to noon, we'll have cookies and coffee. No specific thing that we're gonna talk about, so if you have something interesting you want to talk about, and if you want, if you do want to talk about the budget, you can. You might want to drink lots of coffee, maybe, you know, while we discuss it, but it's, you may have something to discuss, something that, you know, an issue or something, or a concern, come on in, have some coffee and a cookie, and, or just come to visit.
Yeah, you don't have to have a concern, you can just come and have coffee.
That's right.
And cookies.
And cookies, yeah.
And cookies.
Yeah.
Well, all the committees took a month off, so there are no committee reports, so we will.
Really?
Really.
The ambulance service had their meeting in the past month. Just FYI, the ambulance service will be getting a new ambulance. In fact, I think it's supposed to be coming in this week. Take a week or 10 days to get it, the equipment transferred over, but it's a very opportune time, because Sunday night, they smoked a deer with the one that's going, going to be retired, so if anybody is interested in a slightly damaged ambulance, or a truck, or the motor, or whatever, I believe that Nikki's actively soliciting bids, and there aren't many, so. It's not a bad truck, it just isn't used, it's gonna be used as an ambulance, and I think it's got 180,000 miles on it, but it's a diesel, so. So, that will be, that will be going into service. The budget's been tentatively set for the ambulance service with no increase, it still will stay at $13 a head, because we support that on a per capita basis, so, with all the entities, so, there we go.
Okay. Thank you. Now, new business. And the first item is the Polk County Intergovernmental Agreement Concerning Special Assessments and Special Charges. Do you want to say anything more about that?
I will explain a little bit for people who are gonna watch this on the cable channel, and I'll probably read some, further this a little bit, right from Amanda's memo here to the, all the municipalities, really. The city of Amory, like all municipalities, even, I don't know if towns really have a lot of special assessments, but cities and villages can have special assessments and charges that maybe get put on the tax rolls for non-payment and whatnot. When we apply those per the statutes, when the clerk does that, clerk treasurer does that, when Fran does that, those go on the tax roll, and then, at some point during the tax payment process there, that the, we get reimbursed from Polk County. And usually, what they, the term we use is "made us whole," and so we get the payment of that, as well as the tax, the taxes that are paid on those properties. As a lot of counties are doing, they are not doing that at 100% anymore, and there's certain assessments that they're not gonna do that at 100%. And they're also requiring the municipalities, villages, and cities to have an agreement with the county. And I think we even got a little glimpse of that when Kay and I met with the administrator back in the spring. They mentioned that. So, we received this in the, from the county treasurer, Amanda Nissen, and we have to execute this by October 15th, is what the agreement says. So, basically, it's a bunch of state statutes and legalese that they're gonna follow. If we don't implement this, they may not give us 100% of our, those assessments and charges that we put on the bills for unpaid various things, and we still want to do that, so, and we still would like to get reimbursed for those things. So, as part of the process, it kind of outlines, and I won't read the whole thing, basically, when the county will settle with the city of Amory, and basically, any village or entity that has special charges, so. Are there any questions being asked this? I think it's pretty, pretty well, and I imagine all the other communities at Venice, that they want to get reimbursed for those things.
The only question that I have is, since this county is basically failing to act appropriately on tax delinquencies, and the house down here on the corner comes to mind. If we have special assessments ongoing, like for mowing lawn, does that mean they're going to pay on that, or?
Well, they may not pay on that, because that one is one of those that they are kind of, well, wouldn't they say they're walking away?
Well, they've not, they've not taken it for tax.
Yeah, they're not going to. And we have another one that we are, that I was working with the county corporate council that is, another one on the north end, probably, would you say, Tom, has had a few blocks from the other one that was tore down, that is just as bad as that one, that's near the Catholic Church parsonage. And I've gotten in contact with them to try to get that process moving ahead a lot smoother, so that they're doing something about it. Those kind of assessments, because nobody's paying the taxes, we will never get our money back. So, we're doing it because we're trying to avert, you know, the way it looks and the I think it'll help, because the assessor's gone out there, and she is, it's zero. So, if you go look at that assessment on there, it's zero. So, one of the things to help with those kind of situations that come along, is if the property is in very bad shape, it is, and it looks like it's gonna take the county a while, I think it's important to get the assessor out there and have her look at that and make sure the assessment's appropriate. Because what happened with that place is the value was still there, I think it was, at one time, it was $70,000. It kept rolling over $70,000 worth of tax value every year. And so, it was, I like to say, it was like the, not as bad as the national debt, but it was basically like the parking meter was, you know, keep going. So, we can, when we find out about those properties, we can kind of try to stop the, I guess, the bleeding, as you want to say. That, we just kind of, we do put it on the taxes. If they sell it, and they were to make some profit on the sale of that, if it ever were to get sold, we might get our money back. The value that was last on that property was 40,000. What did they say, it was over 40, when we met with them?
I don't.
It was a lot. It was over 40,000 in taxes and fees. Because I think we were charging, I think, how many times a summer were we mowing this? Not, and they're quite like the parks, but, pretty rare. Huh?
Half a dozen times, so we.
Yeah. And we charge a minimum of 100 bucks. That's what our, you know, we've done, minimum charge is 100 bucks, so I don't know how long it takes them to do that, so you'd figure that's $1,200 a year, it keeps getting added on. I think we've been doing that for about three years, that adds on there. Some of those things, you know, you just have to, we have to do it because nobody else will, it's just a public good, I guess.
Is there any way to capitalize on eminent domain, to fix the street corner or the sidewalk or something?
Since we have a new city attorney, we're gonna use, I'm gonna get the process started with him, with, there's a process that came from another community, where they had a piece of property just like this, that was commercial, but this is, the use was residential, and try to get the city to acquire that, and to do something that at least tear it down, you know, is my first goal there, and for all of us.
I think what you're getting at is, the end goal of this is to get those properties not only cleaned up, but back on the tax roll.
That's right.
As something productive, either residential, I know you mentioned some sort of commercial on the one down here in Keller.
It is, yep.
You know, whatever, but if we can expedite that a little bit, because the county's gotta wait five years, I think is the magic number.
Yeah, that's over five years.
But then, there's so much bureaucracy involved there that.
Very much.
It's gonna go more so.
Yeah, and this is another process where basically, where you kind of are using, I guess, a rarely-known statute, kind of force them to do something, and basically, so the city can try to acquire it and get it cleaned up. So, what the city would have to do, when we tore it down, is try to recoup some of our cost. The one good thing that we have is that we don't have to pay a contractor. Our staff are very well, they enjoy tearing down houses. There we go. They enjoy doing that, so, and they've done that. We've had a few homes that they've had to help tear down and restore the site, so that's kind of the goal there for that one. That's a good question to ask when it comes to this.
So, back on task, I make a motion to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement Concerning Delinquent Special Assessments and Special Charges. There's no resolution under anything?
No, no. Not for this one.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agreement. Any more discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Carried. Application for a cider license.
You want to explain that one, Fran?
Yeah, our first application for a Class A cider license. Those were established by the legislature as part of an act in 2015, and what that does is it regulates evidently, there is a alcohol, a one-half up to 7% volume alcohol cider that can be made from apples and pears. And this new license that was established permits people with a Class A beer license to also sell cider along with it. Something that is a little bit unique in that is that part of that statute in that act says that we can't charge them anything for the cider license, we have to just give it to them, and it also, something quite unusual, it says that we shall issue the license, which means this is just a formality, because we have to give them a cider license, and we can't charge them for it either. So, the cider lobby must be pretty colorful, I can say, anything about that. But, this is the first application for a cider license that we've had in the city of Amory, and it is at the Holiday Gas Station.
And once people know that we have to give it to them and not charge them anything, we'll be inundated with cider licenses.
All our Class A, yeah, our Class A licenses are probably gonna want a cider license, too.
Okay.
I've never tried. I can't speak to the quality of a drinker.
It has to be under 7%?
Motion to.
Up 2.7, up 2.7, yeah.
Okay.
It's really hard to say.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I would like to make an amendment.
Motion made and seconded.
On the application, it says to the governing board of the city of Amory, county of Douglas.
Yes. I think that goes to show you, as part of a chain store, whoever was filling out these applications, many of them was doing it in every municipality that they own a store in.
Oh, yeah.
So, can we change?
Yeah, I saw it.
I'm okay with approving it, as long as we change that on the document.
Certainly.
They don't have a liquor license at that store.
Just beer.
Class A beer, off sale.
Okay. With that change, from the county of Douglas to county of Polk, any more discussion? All in favor? I opposed. We have the cider license, and the last one is an alcohol license. Anything on that?
No, they're just your typical applicants, they've provided educational credentials and passed the background checks, so I would recommend that they be approved.
Okay.
I move that we approve the operator licenses.
There's second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the alcohol license. Any more discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Carried. I believe that is all the business to come before this council.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? I, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yes.